Recording in progress.
Let's see if I can make Rami flinch. I didn't get Rami to flinch. Welcome, everyone. I now call the April 4th, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City of Bothell is now providing the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely. Sign-up sheets were provided online by the City Clerk's Office via link from the agenda. A call-in phone number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. For our study session item, we'll recess and move to Conference Room 107 and adjourn the meeting from there. For those of you in the audience, Room 107 has some seating for the public. However, we will also continue to broadcast it in both council chambers and the lobby. For virtual attendees, because Room 107 is Teams-enabled, you will need to use the Teams link provided on the first page of the agenda. As a reminder, you can also watch the meeting on YouTube or BCTV without having to break your connection. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say "here" when the City Clerk calls your name.
Councilmember Thorns. Mayor Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Alderks.
Here.
Councilmember McNeil.
Here.
Councilmember Manke. Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra.
Here.
All present with the exceptions of Councilmembers Thorns and Councilmember Zanki, Manke, who are absent and excused.
Thank you, City Clerk. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently, mute your microphone when not speaking, and for council attending remotely, use the raise hand feature when you wish to speak. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations, reports, and briefings. Public engagement opportunities: We can celebrate Earth Month this April. Celebrate environmentalism all month long with a variety of local activities, including several volunteer events taking place Earth Day weekend. We have another middle housing walking tour Thursday, April 13th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., starting at Bothell City Hall. You can join staff for conversations about the proposals while we look at existing examples of middle housing types like duplexes, triplexes, and ADUs. There's a blood drive at Bothell Police on Tuesday, April 18th, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. in the Bothell Police Community Room. Our community is low on supplies for all blood types. Please register and help ensure area hospitals have blood available for patients. All right, we have one proclamation tonight for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, and whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephoned the Bothell Police Department Emergency Communications Center, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunications of the Bothell Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, and whereas each public safety telecommunications has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, now therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of Bothell, do hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Bothell, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. And I believe we have Deputy Police Chief Susie Johnson to accept and introduce some members of the team. And this one, I will just say, if you'll allow me a moment, is extra special for me. My mom worked at Norcom for a while, so I'm quite familiar with the challenges of the job.
We'll be briefed. But thank you so much. I wanted to introduce Grace Myers. She's our Police Support Services Manager. She runs our dispatch center, and we can't thank you enough. The dispatchers and the telecommunications are the ones that keep us safe. They're the first lifeline that our community has when somebody calls 911, and it's so important that they're trained appropriately, and they deal with their emotions, and give competent and clear instructions to our community, and we have great people there, so this means a ton to them today. Is there anything you want to add at all?
No, just thank you for recognizing us.
And tell them "thank you" too, because it's a tough job.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we have a City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we do. We have a couple of items on the list today. First, for the public awareness, there'll be no council meeting next Tuesday, April 11th. The council will reconvene again on April 18th, so no council meeting on April 11th. And second of all, our interim fire chief, Mark Ryzen, started with the city yesterday, April 3rd. He comes to the city with many years of fire service. He was the interim Woodenville Fire Chief, as well as retired from the City of Bellevue as the Fire Chief in 2017. So you will see him in the future, and I have full confidence he'll be back in front of us before long. So that is the conclusion of the City Manager Report. Thank you.
Apparently, we only hire fire chiefs that my dad worked with in Bellevue. All right, do we have any council committee reports? I don't see the Deputy Mayor raising his hand either. All right, we'll move on to visitor comments. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. We have one person signed up this evening, and that is Mark Swanson. If you'd please go to the podium, you'll have three minutes to speak. Mark, if you'd press that button on the microphone, please. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilmen, councilwomen, and staff, good evening. Indulge me to read this article from the Seattle Times, published December 3rd, 2020, written by a very gifted writer, a Seattle Times environment reporter. First, they circle, then they gasp at the surface of the water. Soon, they can't swim. Then they die. For decades now, scientists have known something was killing beautiful adult Coho salmon as soon as they hit Seattle's urban waters, ready to spawn. They had escaped the orcas. The fishermen traveled thousands of miles only to be mysteriously killed as soon as they finally reached home. The title of the article, "Tired Dust Killing Coho Salmon Returning to Puget Sound." New research shows. This was three years ago. And I'm sorry that Councilwoman Thorns is not here, but she is the guiding light of this council on this stormwater problem. They know what's killing the salmon. It's tired dust runoff in the fall. In a breakthrough paper published in December 3rd issue of Science, a team of researchers revealed the culprit behind the deaths of Coho in an estimated 40% of Puget Sound area, a killer so lethal, it takes out 40 to 90% of returning Coho to some urban streams before they spawn. It is a killer hidden in plain sight.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Your time is up.
I'm not going to say evil, but you people have to be moral.
Okay, Mr. Swanson, your time's up. Thank you for your comment.
Mayor Thompson, that's all I have, signed up to speak, but Mr. Losch, if you'd like to, yep. Please state your name when you get to the podium for the record.
Hi, my name's Terry Losch. I'm from Greenbrier Precinct, Bothell, 40. I want to talk about affordable housing or middle housing. I think we're going to make a mistake if we allow multiples in our single-family zoned neighborhoods. It's not a good time to be a landlord, and if you can't collect rents, you don't maintain properties. And if we change the character of our city by eliminating single-family resident zones, then we're going to invite blight into every neighborhood. Over time, if you can't collect rents, things are going to deteriorate, and particularly if you're talking about triplexes and fourplexes, they have to be occupied by renters. It's not likely that they're going to be owners. If we want affordable housing, we should build small housing for people to buy, small condominiums. They've done this everywhere, including Seattle, all over the country. Young people and retired people need things that they can afford, and if you want to do things in our free-market capitalist system, you build affordable housing, and that's small housing. They can be very nice, first-class appointments, high-quality materials, and high bay windows with balconies. They should be very comfortable to live in, and I think very desirable. And we have surplus city lands that are close to hubs for transportation. We can encourage developers to build on those properties, 150 to 400-square-foot studio and one-bedroom units that people can afford. That's what I would recommend, not changing the character of every neighborhood arbitrarily. I understand that doing that in the legislature, and you're considering it, doing it here, but it's a change that should be up to the ballot for everybody to be aware of what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak tonight? That's all I have.
Thank you, City Clerk. Projected agenda discussion, none submitted. Anybody have something they want to talk about? Oh, Councilmember Dodd.
I do. So bear with me. I don't think anyone has spoken during this part of the agenda in the meetings that I've watched or attended. Deputy City Manager Call, is this where we can request something show up on a future agenda, just to confirm?
Yes, this would be a place and time to provide that information.
Okay, great. I would love an update on the proposal from the Bothell Urban Group. I have some notes about the timeline of their project. They initially submitted a request in April 2021. In June 2021, the city directed them to look at Lot P South. In May 2022, the city asked if they could develop the whole lot. In August 2022, they submitted a plan for the whole lot, and it is now April 2023, and I would just love to know where we're at and kind of where it stands on getting kind of a decision to them. I think they've been in limbo for it's getting to be an untenable amount of time with the different organizations they're partnering with. So I'm just curious if there's other people who'd like to see that, and if we can get that on an upcoming agenda.
Councilmember Dodd, I will certainly look into that and get back to the full council on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dodd. All right. Seeing nobody else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember McNeil?
Seconded.
I have a motion from Councilmember McNeil and a second from Councilmember Alderks to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes 5-0 with Councilmembers Thorns and Manke, absent and excused.
Totally throws me having to say first, like, without Councilmember Thorns here. It's like, oh, my gosh, I'm up already? All right, moving on to the first agenda bill is a public hearing for approval of the resolution and ordinance for the citywide bike plan. Deputy City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening before you is Agenda Bill 23053, and this is regarding the public hearing and consideration for approval of the citywide bike plan. As a reminder, the bike plan has been before you several times, most recently in January of 2023. Tonight, after the staff presentation, we'll be holding a public hearing, and then following the public hearing, we are asking council to consider whether or not to approve tonight or to direct staff to bring it back at a later point in time. With that, I will turn it over to Sherman Gong from Public Works.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. My name is Sherman Gong. I am the City Transportation Planner. With me tonight is Steve Morikawa, Deputy Public Works Director. Tonight, we will be discussing the proposed bike plan and the proposed comprehensive plan amendments in this public hearing to provide council with the opportunity to adopt the bike plan and the comprehensive plan amendments presented in our study session on January 10th earlier this year. Following the public hearing, staff will be requesting council to choose one of two options. Option one is to approve both the resolution adopting the bike plan and the ordinance amending the transportation element of the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan, or request that staff bring both the resolution and the ordinance back to council at a future meeting for additional discussion based on public comments received during tonight's public hearing. For the benefit of those attending this public hearing that did not participate or review the earlier council study session, I'll be providing an overview of the policy considerations, planning commission, and council discussion and results, SEPA process and comments, response to the council study session, and the comprehensive plan amendments. The first policy consideration I would like to review is the new transportation element action that we're proposing. This action will allow the city to adopt the proposed bike plan and to begin implementation of the bike facility actions and policies to achieve the goals outlined in the element of the comprehensive plan. As we discuss and review the bike plan, I think it is important to remind ourselves of the comprehensive plan goals related to bike use in Bothell. Transportation Goal G3 states, "Support growth and vibrancy in commercial, educational, and employment areas through a transportation system that is inviting for all travel modes." G4 says, "Encourage walking, bicycling, ride-sharing, and taking transit in order to reduce congestion and greenhouse gas emissions, improve mobility and overall public health, and improve mobility choices for people with special transportation needs." The two other goals related to bike use are G6, which says, "Create a transportation system that supports both fiscal and environmental sustainability," and then finally, G8, says, "Prioritize transportation investments to support the development of the Canyon Park Regional Growth and Community Activity Center, Downtown Community Activity Center, the North Creek Regional Activity Center, and other community and local neighborhood activity centers." Next, I'd like to just review our public engagement process with council and the planning commission. For the planning commission, we held three study sessions, meetings last year, and two meetings for the public hearing that resulted in their recommendation to adopt the bike plan. For council, we've had two briefings, one each in 2021 and 2022, and we held a study session in January earlier this year. And we also held a public open house and survey in May of last year, along with a stakeholder and community-based organization outreach program to provide opportunities for input and feedback of the bike plan. Next, I'd like to just talk about the SEPA review process. A determination of non-significance was issued January 6th of this year, with a 21-day comment period ending on January 27th. Two comments were received, with both relating to construction coordination during implementation of new bike facilities. The comments were received from the King County Wastewater Treatment Division and Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife. In response to a council question during the study session that we could not answer during that time, Councilmember Manke asked what percentage of the protected bike lanes in the plan would be upgraded versus new. So our review indicated that 35 miles of protected bike lanes, out of those 35 miles, 12 miles or 34% would be upgraded, and 23 miles or 66% would be new bike facilities. Similarly, just thought I'd just go through the other types of bike facilities we have. There'd be nine miles of shared-use paths, of which three miles are existing and six miles are new. For the regional trails in the city, there is nine miles total, but not all of that is maintained by the city. Some is maintained by King County, and some is maintained privately. And then finally, there will be about seven miles of neighborhood greenways, which would be located typically on local streets and designated by charrels and signage. I would like to discuss the comprehensive plan amendments as recommended for adoption by the planning commission and staff. In form of ordinance, in approving the ordinance to amend the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, will allow for the adoption of the Bothell Citywide Bike Plan by action. And I just want to remind you that the ordinance to approve the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendments includes the bike plan amendments only based on the council decision made at the March 7th meeting earlier this year. Also, the bike plan, I'm sorry, the Comprehensive Plan Amendments and the bike plan were also submitted to the Department of Commerce for a 60-day review period between December and February of this year. And adopting these amendments will allow the city to apply for available grants before the periodic update of the comprehensive plan is completed in 2024, as well as allow the city to administer developer requirements for, like, frontage improvements and whatnot. That completes my presentation, and I would like to answer any questions you have at this time.
Councilmember Alderks?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this presentation. I very much appreciate that this is coming back to us, showing the amount of work that has gone in to basically implementing our bike plan that we sort of just created as a very wonderful idea. And so the fact that you are beginning to turn it into reality and get the needed permissions and everything is really exciting. So while you may not have expected to hear this, this is a really exciting presentation, that's how I feel about it. And so I think the big question that I have is, and I really, so I really appreciated the graphic that you did with the different mile types of bike lanes and the number of miles in the city. And so I'm wondering, are there going to be, and how many new miles of protected bike lanes will be created by the bike plan? I saw the upgrade, and maybe that was written down there, but is that the creation of new protected bike lanes?
So all of the bike lanes will be protected, so it's 35 miles completely if we convert existing bike facilities in, like, in street bike lanes. If we convert those to the protected bike lanes, as well as create the new ones, which on streets that don't have any bike lanes at all, so the total will be 35 miles.
Got it. Okay. Thanks for that clarification. I appreciate it. But yeah, I'm really glad to hear the working with regional partners, getting permissions from all over the place. Like, really appreciate the work put into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Not everybody all at once. I mean, we've seen this a bunch of times, as you illustrated already, and it's in pretty much the same form as it was the last time that we looked at it. So I don't have any questions either, but I just wanted to say that I really appreciate how much this has evolved over the course of the last couple of years. It's drastically different than when we started, and I just really appreciate how much you listened to the community, as well as the council, as we talked through this and got to something that we can be really happy with that we don't have any questions on today, because that's kind of best-case scenario, right? So just really appreciate all of your work on this.
Mayor Thompson, I just want to point out that while this is a public hearing, we don't have anybody signed up.
Yep.
We do need to ask if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak?
Or anyone online. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So am I supposed to close the public hearing now? I will close the public hearing. And I would be happy to entertain a motion. Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. I would enthusiastically move the recommended action. That would be option one. So I would enthusiastically move to approve both the resolution adopting the citywide bike plan and the ordinance amending the transportation element of the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
All right. I have a motion of the option one from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Alderks. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? City Clerk? Yes.
Oh, sorry. Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes 5-0 with Councilmembers Thorns and Manke, absent and excused.
Thank you, City Clerk. All right, next up, we have Agenda Bill 23054, "Consideration of a Resolution Approving a Regional Coalition for Housing, 2022 Housing Trust Fund: Recommendations and Allocating Funding from the City's HTF Account." City Manager?
Mayor?
Yeah.
It appears that Elsa is not quite online yet. A couple of options. We can move to the next agenda item if the council concurs and come back, or could someone contact Elsa?
Why don't we just take five and figure it out?
Thank you, sir.
All right. It's 6:31 by this clock right here. At 6:36, we will we'll know what we're going to talk about.
Recording in progress.
We have Agenda Bill 23054, "Consideration of a Resolution Approving a Regional Coalition for Housing's 2022 Housing Trust Fund: Recommendations and Allocation Funding from the City's HTF Account." City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. It's good to be back here this evening. So a regional coalition for housing, or otherwise known as ARCH, was last before you, the council, in October of '22, and then again in December, when the budget was adopted, the authority for the funding was adopted in the 2324 budget. Tonight, Elsa Kings, the ARCH Housing Trust Fund Manager, is here this evening to present to you the 2022 Housing Trust Fund recommendation as described in the letter received in your packet, as well as asking for authority to allocate the 142 packet, as well as asking for authority to allocate the $142,900 that was authorized in the budget. With that, I will turn it over to Elsa King for a short presentation. Elsa, are you there? You are.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for having me today. My name is Elsa Kings. I'm the Housing Trust Fund Manager for ARCH. And I am going to get my presentation ready. If you would just bear with me for a second, I apologize. Want to make sure that I have the correct slides up here. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. So I am very excited to be here today. I'm here to present our 2022, our housing recommendations, and we are very excited to share that this year we are celebrating our 30-year anniversary. So just a little bit about ARCH, for those of you that don't know us, we are a coalition of 13 member cities on in the east side of King County. We, I'm going to go through these sites fairly quickly, but happy to answer questions at the end. We've been around since 1992, and we just are a very innovative approach. Our mission is to tackle affordable housing issues in our local jurisdictions. You can see here, we have, this is our fear of influence. We are as far north as the Bothell area and all the way down south, northbound, Carnation area, and west to Mercer Island. We, all of these cities in this, in within our fear of influence, collaborate in some way, the different cities here that you see in color collaborate via funding to our housing trust fund. We're happy to report that we've had, we have successfully completed 5,200 units, over 88 million, if leveraged through our investments in our housing trust fund. And we have worked on various different policies, including different policy plans, co-adjunents, and other initiatives through housing. Since our inception 30, since our inception 30 years ago, we have had several other organizations that have followed our in our footsteps. You can see here, there's various other coalitions in the area that have tried, that are in the process or have a coalition that is very similar to ours and have used ARCH's, excuse me, ARCH's framework for their organization. So in 2022, we had a significant round, it was, excuse me, it was a larger round than usual. We had a total of 13.1 million in requests, which included several different projects in the area, a total of 845 units. One of those projects that did apply for funding in the in the 2022 funding round, did decided to withdraw their application. They were awarded additional funding through the state housing trust fund and decided to allow others to obtain additional funding as necessary. And so the Friends of Youth projects, although it is one of the, one of our projects that in the city of Kirkland, that is a priority because of additional funding, decided to withdraw their application, so you will not see that as part of our recommendation in this room, but we are recommending additional projects. This year, we had 7.6 million in available funds. A large portion of that was contributions from the city of Kenmore for one of the projects that you will be seeing presented here. The city of Kenmore has, through their strategic plan, made a housing, affordable housing a priority. The project that I will be recommending and I will be talking about here shortly is one of their priority projects, and thus they have decided that they wanted to move a project forward in a timely manner. It contributed half of the ARPA funding and a large contribution of funding. Usually, you see here, there's all of the, all of the areas, all of the cities that contribute to our funding. You can see that every contribution in in our member cities, especially your contribution, is very important to the, to the piece of the pie. All of it makes a whole, and every single contribution is quite important. Again, we, I will present to, be presenting to you these projects for recommendation. I'm not going to go through them because I'll talk to them, I'll talk about them on a high level here shortly and give you some opportunities. We do pride ourselves in that our projects that we are recommending this year do have a substantial amount of affordability, what we call deeper affordability, which is that 30% AMI level. A significant portion of the projects that we are recommending have that 30% and 60% AMI level. So anything between the 30% and 40% AMI, we view as deeper affordability. These projects are very important because they serve the most vulnerable of our population. And usually, those projects are not easily able to be financed but for additional vouchers and and set aside through rental subsidies. The projects that I'll be presenting to you today are benefits beneficiaries of Section 8 vouchers, which is very important to make these projects function as we place in service and we move them forward. But you can see here, six of the, a large portion of the projects are between that 30 to 60% AMI range, which we feel is a very much-needed resident service need. Our projects are highly leveraged. On an annual, usually on an annual basis, our projects are leveraged on a 1 to 4, excuse me, on a 1 to 10 basis. So for every $1 of ARCH investment, we usually use, utilize $10 of additional funding. This year, the funding is, the funding leverage is significantly higher for various reasons that I previously mentioned. One is, of course, the Kenmore contribution of land plus additional ARPA funding to one of the projects, but also a new program through the city of Bellevue, which we, which has been formally named the Housing Stability Program. This program utilizes a 50-90 funding that the city has, has reserved for affordable housing, and one of the projects will significantly benefit from that additional funding. So this year, we have an exceptional leverage rate of for every $1 of funding, ARCH can leverage $40 of additional sources, including local and federal sources such as the low-income housing tax credit equity and tax exempt funds. One of the projects that I will be, I am recommending for funding is the Ardiat Totem Lake project. This is a very interesting project in Kirkland that is very near to transit, has a very good location in terms of proximity to several grocery stores and as well as health services and transportation. The project is a partnership between Imagine Housing and TWG Housing, and it will be serving, it will be serving seniors and veterans. And they, Imagine Housing is proposing 170 studio one-bedroom units, and it will be serving residents at 40, 50, and 60% AMI. This project is very strategically important to the city of Kirkland as it is a project that is designed and developed in an underutilized property that is very close to and will complete a very important area in the Totem Lake neighborhood of the city. Habitat of Humanities Bellevue Homes is our one homeownership project. Homeownership is very important to ARCH, as you might well understand. It is one of those programs that allow for, for families to build financial equity. The project is a Habitat for Humanity proposal in the city of Bellevue, which, 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 excuse me, in which proposes 25 units of three-bedroom cottages at 60 and 80% AMI. This project takes advantage of a recent code amendment in the city of Bellevue, which allows for partnerships with faith-based organizations for affordable housing to utilize and leverage and allow for additional density in these properties. The project was, did request 60%, excuse me, $600,000 in funding, and we are recommending $600,000 for, for this project. We're recommending a, to fully fund this project. Other project that we are recommending for funding is the Kenmore Supportive Housing Project. And Kenmore, this is the project that I was mentioning earlier. It's a collaboration between ARCH and the city of Kenmore, in which the city has prioritized affordable housing, specifically housing for vulnerable residents in the area at 30% AMI. The project is 100 units of studio one-bedrooms for firmly homeless individuals, seniors, and veterans, and persons with disability. The project has requested an allocation of three, just a little bit over $3.2 million, and we are requesting fully funding the project at the amount that they have requested. Just a little bit of additional background in this project because it is a culmination of a, of a partnership between the city of Kenmore and ARCH. We have been, for the past year, working on this project. In 2022, in early 2022, the city donated this property that is very close in a very strategic location in the city, very close to transit. It was valued at $1.9 million, and they have, the city donated it for the specific use of affordable, of the development of affordable housing. In addition, they committed half of their ARPA funding, just over $3 million, for the project, and they committed to moving the project forward in a exceptionally fast timeline and through some different code waivers and city staff involvement. There is an area here that is a community area that is really important to the city and would be utilized by the residents, which is this really nice community courtyard, which is supposed to be something that residents and as well as the community would be taking advantage of to, in an effort to build community. In addition, the project will have on the ground floor a Bastier Clinic with a tea house and apothecary. The Kirkland Heights project is a project that applied to us also in 2022. They requested $2 million in funding. We have, this year, due to the significant amount of requests, have been oversubscribed in our funding, and we're not able to fully fund this project. We are recommending a partial funding award of $1.5 million, just over $1.5 million, for no other reason than we are just not able to fully fund this project. This is a development that will utilize an existing King County Housing Authority property in their pipeline to redevelop and add additional units. Some of the buildings would add additional floors, and within some of these space, empty spaces, King County Housing Authority is proposing that we may build additional buildings to increase their unit production from 180, which is what's currently in the development, to 276 units. The project will serve residents at 30, 60, and 80% AMI. This project is strategically important to the city as well as to the King County Housing Authority in that it will increase the density and the production of the, the units currently on the site, as well as 60, 76% of the residents in this development are BIPOC, from the BIPOC community. And by increasing the unit amount, we will be able to serve additional residents. The Inclusion Scattered Homes site is a proposal by Inclusion Housing LLC. They have requested $400,000 in funding, and we are recommending fully funding this project. It is a, it is a mix of two acquisitions, which are yet to be determined. We're expecting that the homes will be in the Woodinville, Bothell, or Kenmore area. The organization is currently seeking these homes. They are usually single-family homes within the area which they have, which in an area that inclusion currently services. One of the, one of the homes will be an out-of-home service, out-of-home service family unit, which will be specifically for residents 18 to 21 of age and have intellectual and developmental disabilities. And the second home will be specifically for adults and which have intellectual disabilities. I apologize, I think I said that previous home was for adults, but it's actually for and in that children's home, there is, we are expecting a total of three residents and a caretaker unit. The Spring District District Project is a strategically important project for the city of Bellevue. It is in a very important location in the Spring District. It is right adjacent to the Sound Transit Operations and Maintenance Facility. It, the bridge in conjunction with two other development partners is requesting $4 million for the development of 235 studio one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units. Residents that will be served in this development will be 40, 50, and 60% AMI, families and individuals. This project is a, is part of a larger mixed-use master-planned community development in which the city of Bellevue issued an RFP, and Bridge had one along with its development partners. You can see here that Buildings 3 and Building 6 are the two affordable housing buildings, and the other buildings are a mix of office buildings as well as market-rate residential buildings. So it's going to be a nice mixed-use project with various amenities and nice walkable paths. The project does, is intended to start construction in November of 2024. Again, due to our oversubscription of funding and the timeline for the project, we felt like we were not able to fully fund the project at the requested $4 million. This project is strategically important, and it is a priority for ARCH, and we were able to allocate $350,000 and make a recommendation for the, for the approval of $350,000 towards this project. We feel like, given the timeline and the construction not scheduled to start for another couple of years, Bridge could potentially come back to ARCH next year for additional funding, and we fully expect that they will. The final project that I'll, that I will be recommending today is the Tane Sixplex project. This is a small development in the city of Kirkland for homeless families. The, Tane is proposing a new construction of a building in between two, just in here in an open field, an open lawn, excuse me, between two existing buildings, which they currently manage. The Uh the development is a proposed six-unit two-bedroom uh for residents at fifty percent AMI. Attain requested seven hundred and fifty thousand in funding. Again, due to our oversubscription in uh in in of our funds, we are not able to fully fund this project. We are recommending this project be funded at fifty percent, excuse me, at fifty thousand. And um this project, we feel like uh it could use an additional uh a te- uh technical assistance. And so we feel the the recommended amount of fifty thousand yard dollar, fifty thousand dollars could be utilized for technical assistance to allow attain to continue with the schematic design and continue the project uh through design and successful application during next year's Arch round as well as uh applying to for additional funding uh through the King County uh human services funding as well as the Housing State uh uh Trust Fund. I am happy to stop sharing and open it up for questions.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Elsa, for uh for the presentation and thank you for uh you know jumping in even though you're we started you early on this thing, so I appreciate you uh your flexibility. I have a few questions. The first one is I uh it's the two round, the the first list you showed twenty twenty two and then this second list right now, it's missing Bothell as a location. How can we get Bothell to be on that list?
Um, I I I believe if I'm understanding your question correctly, um the the projects that we are funding don't include both the projects?
Yes, so what would it take for us to get bottle projects on 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 your list?
We would be happy to work with uh the with with staff and council to get Bothell on that list. We have, as I previously mentioned, been working with cities like the city of Kenmore and city of Bel- uh Bellevue and others uh in within our jurisdiction to be able to uh a plan uh given the priorities that each city has. Each city has different priorities um to plan strategically what uh affordable housing could be developed. Uh some of the cities have uh chosen to to identify city-owned properties or um other potential uh 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 partnerships with say Sound Transit or uh King County Metro uh et cetera for the strategic planning of uh affordable housing within those uh those properties, the development of affordable housing. Those are some of the ways that cities have chosen to utilize uh some of their properties. Others have again uh uh chosen to utilize some of their taxes uh in ARPA funding for affordable housing, and we're always happy to connect with uh the city council members and staff uh to identify ways in which we can build affordable housing in your city.
Yeah, it would be great if we can collaborate more deeply than just giving them, you know, money, which I don't feel like we are doing enough even there, so. The next, thank you for the answer. Uh the second question is uh you mentioned something about the the you're heavily leveraged. In the on the finance world, heavily leveraged is means you're heavy debt. Is that the same thing here or is it just you have for every dollar we give, there's other funding sources that is not loans that we have to pay back?
I I believe it's it's the when we when we speak of leverage uh it within the Arch Housing Trust Fund, we mean uh additional funding. So if Arch uh puts in funding, we usually obtain additional funding from King County um Human Services. We obtain uh funding from the State Housing Trust Fund um and sometimes federal sources like CDBG funding, home funding, as well as low-income housing tax credits. Not all of the projects carry debt. Some do not uh as some of the operating costs are not um sufficient or or do not allow for projects to carry debt. However, we do see that some of our projects, some of the um larger uh projects that uh apply for four percent tax credits sometimes do have um debt through private sources that can be um that can be uh together with bonds reduce the 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 debt rate. So uh when we speak of leverage, uh we're talking about other local sources of of funds from um like state, county and other cities.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Uh that yeah, that is right. That's what I thought. I just wanted to double check um uh the context. Um, there yeah, there are a couple of projects that made a request and you decided to fund them less uh you approved a lower amount. Um, what's the likelihood of these projects actually happening? I know the last one you mentioned like that they're so early on, you're just giving them funding to just go and do the planning, but what about the other ones?
Um, I I believe that the Kirkland Heights Project is a ver- a- all of them are very high likelihood for them to actually fund uh for them to happen and for them to come back for additional funding. The King County Housing Authority Kirkland Heights Project is currently in the process of development and they're going to start construction on their second phase in uh the summer. Uh so that is a very high highly likely project. Uh I feel like they are very close to filling that gap that we were not able to to fund, so they will proceed, and we probably will not see this project come back for additional funding. Um the other two projects that I mentioned, the Bridge uh Spring District Project in Bellevue uh will, we will likely see it next year. Again, that is a project that is very strategically important for the city and very, very likely to happen. It's just in a great location uh and it's the the city has been working on this project in partnership with Arch for and King County and other partners for a while. The attain project is is a project that is, as you mentioned, in the very early feasibility stages, and we might, we might see it come back a couple of times before it's ready to begin construction. But we have a model at Arch that always uh we we are all, we're always and we are always aiming to make sure that the project happens or try to make the project happen uh instead of uh uh setting barriers. We want to always want to remove any barrier that the project might have.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you for the presentation. I just had a couple of questions around uh projects. Um, is there a way to potentially show us in the future a map of the projects? I I think you had uh shown a slide that it's been like fifty two hundred projects or something like that or unit units. Is there a way to show uh a map of where those are located um throughout the region?
Sure, absolutely. We do have uh a map available, and I can go ahead and send that over to staff uh and share it, share it with you. We have a very limited presentation time and I chose to strategically remove that map, so my apologies, but I can't share that with staff.
No, I think I think it's just a fabulous opportunity to to have a map that would show, you know, the spots where those actually, well, those projects occurred. Um, kind of to the deputy mayor's point, um understanding what, you know, where they're actually being built um and who they're serving would be good to show on that map as well. Um, you know, visual, I'm a visual person, so if I can see it visually, like I'm noticing on one of the slides, it says there's four or five projects that are happening in the pipeline right now in Kirkland as an example. Um, so what did what did that look like the past ten years? Um, how many projects have been built in Kirkland? How many in Bothell? Just kind of understanding holistically uh over time um and then seeing of who they're serving um and then what what the outcomes are for that, you know, what who they're serving um and making sure that it's serving in perpetuity as it should. Um, in the presentation, a lot of projects we saw today, is there a way to tell how many units will be built this year? Um, have have you guys have a yeah analysis that will show, you know, out of this, you know, two hundred units, we expect to see fifty go online this year?
Sh- sure. We don't expect that uh many will uh will be online this year. Usually our projects um at that the timeline is anywhere from two to four years uh in the terms of culmination of the start of the project to completion and placed in service. Um however, with the King County Housing Authority uh project, we do expect that some units will be online. Again, uh some of them had the the a a portion of the project has started, so we do expect some units online this uh year. I don't know what that number is, but I can certainly get it for you. Uh but usually uh when we allocate funding resources to projects, it is a a a year to a couple of years before we actually see it placed in term and in service, just in terms of the construction uh timeline and uh the other uh partners also have to um if if there's a funding gap, they sometimes projects have to obtain additional funding. Um and if the project has low-income housing tax credits, sometimes the project then has to identify that uh equity partner and additional uh uh sources of debt. So it it takes a little bit.
Okay, so money that we spent two to four years ago, we're recognizing those units being put into place today versus the money we're spending today. It'll be two to four years. Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
A- approximately, yes. Some projects uh move faster than others, uh but for the most part, it it once allocated um once the resources have been allocated and the project is fully funding and funded, it does take about a year for it to commence construction. But we'll go through the permitting process in each uh city and uh find the additional uh sources of financing.
Okay, I just in the future like to see kind of how much we're spending yearly, what's being brought online yearly as far as the units. It might be good to see, you know, kind of what that what that looks like. Um, are there other groups like Arch throughout our region that are doing doing the same thing?
That are funding, uh if if I understand correctly, the question is, are there other groups that are funding affordable housing? Uh, we- well, we do uh have, of course, a partnership with the King County Human Services and they uh fund some of our project and the State Housing Trust Fund, but groups, uh coalition such such as Arch, there are um other um coalitions that are either in the beginning stages of uh their organizational structure. Uskip for um, for example, had their first funding round this year, and uh we're very excited to uh collaborate with them, and um they are part of our first of funding partnership. They most their their projects are in South King County and and so at the area, the sphere of influence that Arch does not touch is the um is are the jurisdictions that Skip usually funds.
Yeah, what the reason I was asking that question is because the need doesn't have a boundary, right? Um, it doesn't matter if you live in Bothell or you live in Renton or Kent or Arlington. The need is the same, right? And so it'd be it'd be good to see what what we're doing here locally in in Bothell, our contributions, uh whether they're going to Kirkland or Kenmore or whatever city or their money is coming here. It'd be good to see that holistically across our region to know um what we're actually doing and how we're balancing it out. So I I just speak more in general terms because, you know, there's a lot of, you know, being on several different committees now. Um, I'm hearing a lot of different um groups, committees that are coming at this from different angles to try to solve the problem. And it'd be good to understand kind of how and 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 where everybody's investing their money. We talk about seniors and and veterans and and and, you know, one of the pieces, there was a project in there for youth that uh they've got their funding from another source, which is great. They're getting their their funding. Uh but I I think it's important for us, you know, for for us to hear um not just from Arch, but what we're doing regionally um with our efforts um and then to actually see outcomes and and who we're actually helping. Um, because there's been several projects that have been brought forward, um you know, whether they're being purchased for homelessness or whatever that aren't actually being used right now. And so it wanting to make sure that our dollars are being spent properly um and that we're actually helping the people that we're we're putting our money towards helping. So I think you guys do an amazing job, amazing work. It's it's no tough feat right now to try to build housing in today's market. I mean, housing is an all-time high, whether, you know, I think lumber's low, but every other commodity is high. So um it's important that we find partnerships and ways to partner with developers. And and I guess if if there's developers out there, what would they, what would your your um request be to them if they're interested in building affordable housing, but they're they're running into roadblocks? Do you have, is there a a place or a person they would reach out to? Because I know several developers that I've talked to recently have found roadblocks when working with uh affordable housing groups. But what would you say to them?
Sure, thank you. Uh, that's a great question. We uh on an annual basis request information for potential uh from developers about potential developments within their pipeline. Uh, we we call it a in- interest uh uh an interest request. Um, and those emails, that email actually just went out a couple of weeks ago in which we collect uh all of that data based on the requests from or the responses from developers. And that uh information helps us in inform, helps us be informed for the next um round and it helps us develop the amount of funding that we will need um in our potential pipeline. So I think to answer your question, if any developers that are running into roadblocks uh for affordable housing, they can contact myself or they can contact our executive director, Lindsay Masters. Uh Lindsay is um she's in addition to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we also uh work on uh policy, on on assisting with policy and other incentive uh programs within cities. So developers that are looking for additional assistance or possibly uh a- adjust some uh have questions about developing affordable housing, contact myself for Lindsay Masters. Uh but we are always looking to provide assistance uh to be able to uh develop that affordable housing, whether it's in our member cities or anywhere in the region, even on the national uh level.
Fabulous. Thank you for that. I I think it's an important message to get out um because not all of our cities are the same um and not every um developer is the same. And so if we can find ways to break down those barriers to create that affordable housing um partnering with you, I think that's that's an important piece. And so um poli- if we set policy, we want to make sure the policies that we're setting are allowing us to create that affordable housing versus putting a barrier up. So so thank you for for.
Councilmember Aldrichs.
Thank you, Mayor. Um thanks Elsa for the presentation. Um, and it's just exciting to see uh every year come back with new projects and um more opportunities to expand affordable housing. Um, I think the last time you were here or one of your colleagues was here, um we talked about the SAMA project in Bothell. Um, and I think I think that was one that uh funding was provided in twenty twenty two. And um that is currently under construction here in downtown Bothell, um and that's very exciting. And um I'm also knowing that there are a couple of um there are a couple of projects in town that are intended to be affordable housing projects. And so from what if I'm understanding you correctly, those uh those potential developers can can reach out to you for technical assistance and um and and possibly even become a a funded project from Arch in future years? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, absolutely. They can reach out to us. Uh I again, if if it's uh related to the Housing Trust Fund, they can reach out to me and potential funding to the Housing Trust Fund, they can reach out. Uh, anything that is as other types of affordable housing, incentive programs, et cetera, uh they can reach out to Lindsay Masters, our executive director. And yes, thank you for the wonderful reminder. SAMA senior is under construction. We are expecting for it to be placed in service in twenty twenty four. And actually, I just had a wonderful presentation about that project earlier today with the King County folks. It's um moving along very, very nicely. We're very, it's one of our uh projects that we're very excited about.
That's awesome. Um, thank you. Uh, so that's sort of, that's sort of past feature, but the question about the your current proposal that you've brought for us tonight, I have a question about the attain housing project. Um, I have two questions. First, will wraparound services be available at that building since people are coming out of homelessness? Or is this like the step beyond where they're not needing services still?
This this is a, this is proposed as a transitional housing development in which there would be a wraparound services. Uh again, it is in the early feasibility stages and the services plan has not been and the services plan has not been fully developed. But it is expected to have a significant amount of services that is appropriate for the residents that will be having.
That's fantastic. I'm glad to hear it. And then my last question is, since it is a sixplex, was that building made possible by the middle housing amendments in Kirkland? Is it now possible to build that building because those amendments were made?
The building is was actually, it it was not part of the middle housing development. But I love that initiative. It's a great initiative.
Cool. All right, well, those are my questions. Excited to see these projects brought forward. I hope that in a couple of years, next year, we can have some Bothell projects on these lists, too. Thank you.
Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation, Elsa. I, Deputy Mayor Al Cabra, got my first question of how can we get Bothell on the proposed projects list? I think it's it's such a good point that we do have to look across the region because, you know, on one hand, finding a unit or a home, you know, in Kirkland from Bothell, that's, you know, that's not, that's pretty close, right? But I also think people, people who need to, you know, coming out of homelessness or whatever, whatever they're facing, I think if they're part of a community and they can stay in that community, that's good, too. So I don't want us to not be able to to actually act on our commitment to affordable housing. And I I am kind of curious, too, about the numbers. It's hard to compare ourselves, like, you know, we have a list of contributions from different cities. Is there a table that has the contributions plus what percentage of the city's budget it is to kind of see how in line we are? But, you know, at a scale versus just because it's easy to say, okay, this city that is much bigger than us can do tens of millions of dollars. But I would like to kind of see what percentage of each budget is getting put into the trust fund if we can.
I I do have the, I do have, and I believe in your packet, we were able to provide an allocation per city to each project.
Okay.
However, how that aligns with your budget, that's not something that I am able to provide. However, I might be able to work with your staff to be able to provide that information.
But and that's totally fine. Just a way to kind of contextualize it as percent of budget is the first thing I thought of. But I'm sure that our staff might have a better way to to just kind of see where we are in in sort of a fair comparison mode, if that makes sense. But don't come to me for financials like right off the top. So that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Elsa. Thank you for rolling with us. I know we got through the first part of our agenda a little quick tonight. Quick question for you. Are you guys working with the group from Bothell Urban?
You know, not that, not that I know of. That is not to say that they might not be working with other staff members in Arch, but not, not that I know of, not that I am aware.
Okay. What kind of timeline are we looking at in order for people to be able to apply for funding rounds for next year? Like, kind of what's the deadline to get in the system? Like, what do we need to look at if we want them to be able to work with Arch next year? Like, when do we have to get this done by?
That's a wonderful question. We always say, please speak to us often, please speak to us early. We are happy to speak with you many, many, many times or with a with a developer many, many times before the project comes to us for potential funding. But to answer your question in terms of the timeline, we, like I said, we just sent out our intent email, which allows us to understand potential projects that will be coming in for the round. We usually send out our request for proposals in early June, early to mid-June. And that is usually, as well as it goes out to all of our contacts in our contacts list, it is also posted on our website. So a developer can look out for it then. Applications are usually due mid-September, and that is in alignment with the King County Human Services as well as the State Housing Trust Fund timelines. With a award, usually with, throughout the September to December timeline, we, you know, continue to work with the agencies that have applied, ask additional questions, provide some technical assistance. And of course, our awards are usually brought for recommendation early January to, could be May. So developers that are looking to apply to our Housing Trust Fund should look look out for an RFP sometime in early to mid-June.
Okay. It is early April, so a couple of months from now that that will go out. Okay, fantastic. Thank you. I just, I wanted to highlight this to staff because we have members of our community, the Bothell Urban team, that live here, that worship here, that want to do something cool in Bothell because they live in Bothell and they want to help us address some of our biggest problems that we face. That is really important to me. That is really important to this body. And to me, it kind of looks like they're staring down the barrel of a deadline to be able to find funding. And I just want to make sure that we can get to the conclusion of our conversation with them as quickly as possible. And I don't have any other questions. Elsa, thank you so much for your time tonight. Do we have action? I think. In that case, I will entertain a motion.
I move the recommended action to approve the Arch 2022 Housing Trust Fund project recommendations and allocate $142,900 from the city's Arch Trust Fund account for the 2022 housing project recommendations. Can I do that?
Please do.
Second.
I was looking down to find the recommended action instead of looking for somebody to call on, which is my bad. I have a motion from Councilmember Aldrichs and a second from Councilmember Dodd to approve the recommended action. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none? City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra? Passes five zero with Councilmembers Zornz and Minkie absent unexcused.
Thank you so much. Elsa, thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Agenda Bill 23055, consideration of approval to enter into two Department of Natural Resources aquatic easements for utility crossings on the Sammamish River. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, Boyd Benson is with us once again to chat about two easements across the Sammamish River with Department of Natural Resources. I think these are fairly routine with that. Boyd, I will turn this over to your direction.
Thank you so much and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council. City Clerk, would you? Thank you so much. Tonight, we have two separate actions before you. I'll have a very brief presentation to give you some history on these two separate items for consideration. And these two items include consideration of approval for two aquatic easement agreements with the Department of Natural Resources. Thanks so much. Next slide, please. The first is to replace an existing easement for a sewer and water crossing beneath the Sammamish River. That's a 30-year easement. We'll give you a bit of information about. The second is a new aquatic easement for a planned gravity sewer main across the 96th Avenue Bridge. Thanks so much. So history. The waters of the state are managed by the state, and that includes the aquatic lands associated with those waters. So anything within the ordinary high water is considered an aquatic land. And to have infrastructure or other improvements or you must have an aquatic easement. So typically, you see our sewer water storm within roadways. This is slightly different. So we have two crossings we're looking at right now. The first one is in the east, just north of Woodenville Drive. And it takes a existing sewer and water main beneath the Sammamish River. And the second is the westernmost, the Western Circle. And that's for the One Eden 96th Avenue Bridge. These easements are required to continue with the existing crossings and to permit and install the new crossing. They're typically 30-year easement agreements. We don't pay for these agreements. There are some staffing and processing charges associated with each. Next slide, please. So the first easement, this is the existing crossing with sewer and water. This serves pretty much the southeast quarter of our city. Effluent comes down and instead of having a pump station to pump it up where it can gravity flow to King County Metro, it crosses beneath the Sammamish River. And it's kind of hard to see, but there's a red line on that air photo, which is the King County Metro trunk main. And when you see these, they're called siphons. It's actually not a siphon action where it pulls sewage through. But what they typically have for the sewer are much smaller diameter pipes. So in this case, we have a six-inch diameter pipe and a 10-inch sewer siphon. And one's a primary and one secondary. They're kind of a couplet. And the reason you do that is the the smaller diameter can get the effluent through at really high velocities. It keeps everything entrained. With gravity flow, the sewage can just kind of flow along. But when you go through a sag and you see that upper left image where the pipe goes down and it's it's a good 15 feet depressed beneath, at least the downstream end, those high velocities keep the pipes scoured. And that secondary, the larger the two pipes are for overflow events. In the easement, we also have a water main that 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 loops our sewer, our water system down through there for pressure and water quality. And this one's kind of interesting. It was installed in the early 1990s. And at that time, they actually, they excavated across the the river. So they did some, we don't have photos to share, but the design drawings are pretty interesting where they actually came down the banks. They pumped and put in coffer dams, it appears, and and they excavated and installed. Both of these easements have been reviewed by Public Works and the Legal Department. And as I mentioned before, they're required for continued service. Next slide, please. This, the second agreement for consideration is a new gravity main across the 96th Bridge. So you can see in the lower left image. This is just, it's, 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 this new pipe is replacing the existing force main from the Vaal lift station one. That's that red dot. You'll see this project come forward in the pretty near future this this year and the projects to install a new gravity main across that bridge to bypass as much flow from that lift station, get it across. What we found as part of the permitting for that capital project, it's CFP Projects S 13 and S 14, is that we didn't have an existing easement for the existing sewer main crossing. So this is considered a new easement for that new pipe. At the same time, we we looked into the existing water main crossing on the bridge. We don't have an easement for that one either. And we were instructed to get this processed and come back at a later date to amend that easement to include the water main. We tried to do both at the same time. And Department of Natural Resources said no. This easement is required, one for continued service since we don't have an easement for the sewer main and required for finalization of project permitting and allow us to go out to bid. This one's also been reviewed by Public Works and Legal. It's, it's, it's missing final revisions with respect to the description of the pipe. But otherwise, it's complete and in accordance with city requirements. Next slide, please. So that's what we have to present to you tonight. And we're recommending approval of two separate actions. The first is to authorize the city manager to execute aquatic easement number 51A52674 in substantially the same form as presented. And the second is to authorize the city manager to execute aquatic easement agreement number 51104620 in substantially the same form as presented. Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question on the the bridge. So the easement is just to do the work and maintain the lines, right? Is that bridge, the One Eden Way Bridge, is that due for repairs? Or how will the work that we're doing today affect us in the future if we need to do upgrades to the bridge?
Yeah, that's a question. I can't give you a full answer and we can follow up later or ask for Deputy Public Restructure Steve Markawa to answer that. But that did just go under some retrofits. So that was recently upgraded to to make sure that it it's relatively stable and to to keep the bridge functioning until it's replaced. This proposed action is basically taking the existing force main off its hangers and replacing it with a new one. So it should not adversely affect affect the bridge.
Fabulous. So the the new lines won't be compromised by the old bridge?
No, sir.
Thank you.
I don't have any other questions either. So it doesn't shock me that my fellow council members also do not. Councilmember Dodd?
Practically. Can we make a motion to do these both at once or is it two motions? Paul's not here, so I'm looking at you.
Oh, when we brought this forward to Paul, since they're two separate agreements, we we we'd done these as separate actions in the past. But I.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Move anything, can I ask a question?
Yes.
The the one that's located on the, like, far east side of the city, Woodenville, is that an agreement that Woodenville also will have to make? Or is it fully within Bothell?
Very good question. It's fully within Bothell. And that was the first easement we've renewed in quite a while. So we kind of cast a broad net and and made sure to coordinate with a bunch of folks. And it really just turned out that all that Department of Resources cares about is the actual crossing, and they happen to own that property, the state lands.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Now, can I motion?
Please do.
A motion to authorize the city manager to execute the DNR aquatic easement. Do I have to read the number? Okay, number 51A52674 in substantially the same form as presented.
Second.
You'll say somebody, somebody second it. I got a motion from Councilmember Aldrichs and a second from Councilmember Dodd to move the recommended action. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none? City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra? Passes five zero with Councilmembers Zornz and Minkie absent unexcused.
Thank you, City Clerk. Who wants to do the next one? Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you. I move that we authorize the city manager to execute DNR aquatic easement number 51-104620 in substantially the same form as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Aldrichs to move the second recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Al Cabra?
Yes.
Passes five zero with Councilmembers Zornz and Minkie absent unexcused.
Fantastic. Thank you, City Clerk. Thank you, Boyd. Always a pleasure. We are going to break at 7:35. We're going to break until 8:00 PM so that the deputy mayor has time to break his Ramadan fast. We will see you in that room, the Teams room. I don't remember what room that is.
107.
107. Thank you. At 8 o'clock PM.
Now we're unmuted. We should be. There's a big hill behind you.
Can somebody send Romney the link on Teams or invite him to it?
Can't be Bothell.
Laura's gone.
Is this a movie theater?
So James, I've been queued up for after the. I have the scene queued up for you.
Have a movie date.
Want to do it now? You can't rest, you see it.
Hey, Paul.
All right, welcome back to the meeting. Next up on our agenda is a study session. We have Agenda Bill 23056, the King County RE Plus Pledge. Deputy City Manager, let's take it from here.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, as Mayor just mentioned, the RE Plus pledge is before you this evening for your feedback and information for yourselves. There's no action being asked of you tonight. If you are interested in signing on to the pledge, you certainly can draft staff at the end of your study session to bring it back on a on a future calendar. But there would be no actual legislative action this evening. So with that, with us this evening is Emily Warnock, our Public Works Sustainability and Engagement Coordinator. And I believe Andy Smith with King County Solid Waste Division is here as well. With that, I will turn it over to Emily to start us off.
Yes, thank you. As you mentioned, we have Andy Smith, Recycling and Environmental Services Manager with King County Solid Waste Division. And we also have here tonight Amy Oklander, And we also have here tonight Amy Okelander, also with King County Solid Waste Division. I will turn it over to them to begin their presentation.
Thank you so much for for having us, just want to do a quick sound check that you can hear me okay? Okay, great, thank you so much. And I have some slides that I think will hopefully do a good job of telling the story about why we're here to talk to you today about our RE Plus program. And I'm just going to share my screen and this is sometimes where the technology doesn't doesn't like to play well. Hopefully, you are now seeing a animation of a of a GIF that's showing all of the good words that we associate with RE Plus. So it's essentially our new program to reframe zero waste. And the reason why we chose RE Plus, hopefully the GIF is sort of telling this story anyway. And but he's essentially thinking about all of the things that you could recycle or reuse or repair or restore or reduce your consumption in the first place. In short, rethinking all of our purchasing and material use habits. So because of all of those good reuse and all of those good words starting with RE, that's why we named our program RE Plus. And as you can see on screen at the moment, this is our mission and vision statement. Really at the heart of what we're trying to deliver with RE Plus is is, as I mentioned, reframing that that zero waste goal. Though, as we know, our region has signed up to a 70% goal. And that's because 70% of the material that gets thrown away each year actually could be used for other purposes. So think about all the cardboard and metal and food that could go to better, more useful purposes. So really, at the heart of RE Plus is to minimize our environmental impacts and move towards that zero waste goal while also creating opportunities for everyone in in King County to thrive. So what does what does meeting a goal look like? And I think, you know, just talking in terms of like 70% or even just in terms of the total tons, it can be quite abstract for folk. So when we think about meeting the goal compared to today, that's, you know, almost 465,000 tons of less waste going to the landfill every year. So that's fewer trees being cut down to make paper. And also the amount of food that gets thrown away to the Cedar Hill landfill every single year is enough to feed 92,000 people a meal. And delivering on this objective will also mean more jobs. RE Plus is a green growth job engine. And that's because we need more people to collect the materials, process materials, build infrastructure, etc. And it could also help us save capital costs in the future. And although a decision hasn't been made on on what to do when the Cedar Hills landfill closes, if that's waste export, and that's pretty expensive. And so all the things we can do now to reduce the use of those alternatives later will save the region funding. We also sort of want to note that RE Plus helps us deliver a bunch of our region's objectives, sort of in particular around equity and also around climate change. So in the Strategic Climate Action Plan that's supported by the K4C commitment, we have a commitment of zero food waste in landfill by 2030. And that's a key part of how we deliver our zero waste of resources. And also because of the the connection the food system has to climate emissions, when we reduce the amount of food waste and prevent it in the first place being created, there are significant emission reductions across the whole of the life cycle. We also note that taking action on RE Plus, if we do that with intention around equity and social justice, we have huge potential to address disproportionate burdens on our communities that exist today and also create equitable opportunities for people to benefit and participate in the program. And I'll I'll talk just a couple of minutes about some of those opportunities shortly. One of the things that we wanted to find out is like where people are in the region. You know, we often get feedback, especially from our private partners, stakeholders, that actually zero waste isn't high on the list of people's kind of to do list. So we enlisted the EMC Research to do a survey of residents to really gauge their support of the concept. And as you can see on screen, we have a pretty good reaction from folk when they don't really know much about the program. So across King County, around 63% of folk just innately naturally want to support RE Plus after just hearing a very high level statement. When the researchers delve in a bit more detail to of the type of things that, you know, folk might want to see as part of the RE Plus program, we see there are huge potential benefits for things like, you know, harmonizing recycling and composting across the region and increasing the availability to drop off plastic bags, etc. Our lowest score across all of these eight questions was 6 to 7%, which is which is pretty good when looking at what the region thinks. What's even more interesting is that after we talked to folk just for a few minutes about RE Plus, the type of work that we're doing, and in particular those asking those few questions you saw on the previous screen, the large number of people that didn't really know about the program didn't sort of have a view initially, which is almost a third of people, you know, 29%. We converted the vast majority of those to be supportive. So the the number of support went up to a whopping 88%. There was a few folk after hearing about RE Plus, you know, they did they did oppose, so they opposed went up to 10%. But nevertheless, and this is a really good sign, that the RE Plus program really does resonate with King County residents. So just a little bit on sort of where King County is at. So a note of success, you know, our region was one of the first regions nationally to implement programs like curtside collection of non-organic recyclables. And construction and demolition recycling is also first in the nation. And also, we were one of the first to have yard waste collection. But when we look at other jurisdictions elsewhere, there are places where we are lagging behind. And some of those places are, some of those things are things like weekly organics and recycling collection, policies like extended producer responsibility, which would reduce the amount of costs to ratepayers for recycling while also increasing infrastructure development and also just generally banning food waste that are heading to the landfill. When we compare ourselves to the sort of national average, we are we are doing pretty well. Like our region is almost at 54% for a recycling rate compared to a national average of just over 32%. So compared to the 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 average American jurisdiction, we're not doing too badly. However, we've set our goal of 70% and that's because it's consistent without those broader objectives I noted earlier. And so we do think there are lots of opportunity in our region to deliver change. On this slide is just a quick summary of our Fast Start action items. We're concentrating on plastic, paper and organics because that makes up the bulk of the opportunity going to the landfill. We've got a number of new programs around investing in community through grants and also doing more around business development. And when we add all of those benefits together, there is significant co-benefits from the transition that RE Plus promises. So when we add together all of those things that we're trying to do, not just on a pilot basis, but then if they're replicated across the region, we're seeing around the potential for around 300,000 to 400,000 tons per year diverted away from the landfill. And when we plug that into our climate modeling, that shows that we could see a significant reduction in community-wide emissions of around 200,000 to 300,000 tons of CO2 equivalent. It's not all necessarily as simple as that, you know, it's very easy for us to use models to sort of tell a very rosy story. There are things that we really have to reflect on. In order to unlock that potential, we're going to have to make investments, both in community and also infrastructure that could increase rates for ratepayers. That could also be offset by folk having smaller garbage cans and that could reduce the the cost plus with policy objectives like extended producer responsibility, there's lots of opportunity to change funding. Behavior change is also super challenging. And so engaging folk where they are, whether they're, you know, single-family organic generators, multifamily generators and or businesses, and there's going to be significant amount of engagement needed to to support people in the change. One of the one of the additional benefits though is is the potential for green jobs in this region. I think one of the things we're wanting to be intentional around is, you know, we just don't want to divert just for diversion sake. We want to make sure that the benefits and the opportunity are felt by communities here in King County. And so that's why we've, as part of our RE Plus agenda, are investing in things like Material Accelerator Program, business development programs, and also our Super Economy Grants. So what can cities do to help? Well, cities are central to the effort, and not least because most of the people and businesses in King County are in cities. Cities are crucial for the connection to local generators, whether they're residential or commercial. One of the ways that we are trying to encourage the partnership approach that is needed for RE Plus is through the city pledge that was mentioned earlier. So at the moment, we're in the the process of rolling out the pledge and we've had a number of cities already sign the pledge, which is awesome. And we're hoping that this rollout of presentations around RE Plus is going to encourage more cities to join the RE Plus community. We have a total of 37 city presentations to be done by June, and I think we're well on our way to meeting that goal. We also have a goal of 12 pledges to be approved by the end of May, which again, I think we're we're well on our way to deliver. I think crucially here, we're also wanting to hear from cities about your about your needs. You know, your city is doing a really excellent job at kind of having the number of subscribers, for example, who have garbage also have organics. Your diversion rate is, you know, one of the better rates in King County. Still not as high as cities like Bellevue, Kirkland, Lake Forest Park, Mercer Island, Renton. So I think there's lots of opportunity to engage. And what we're hoping through the beginning of the dialogue through the pledge is really sort of identify what support you need from the county in order to get your stats to be one of sort of the best cities in the region. With that, I'll leave you with my contact details. And so I'm the interim Recycling and Environmental Services Manager for the Solid Waste Division at King County. And we also have an Amy here today who is Government Relations Administrator. And so with that, I'll stop, share my screen. And I went through that very quickly just because of the the time constraints of today. But if you have any questions, I'm here at your service.
I don't have to call on anybody here, y'all can just talk.
How you doing, Amy?
You're still on mute.
Oh. Sorry about that, I'm good, thank you. It's good to see you all and and be here tonight, thank you for having us.
Oh, Rami, it's a study session, you don't have to put your hand up.
Well, I I heard Councilmember McNeil speak, so I just got quiet, so. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much for the presentation. It's very, very helpful, very insightful, reading the agenda, the details in the agenda packet were also very, very interesting. There's a slide that mentioned you had a little box on the side that says cities not included, what does that mean?
I can answer that, so that's just a slide showing what cities we've given presentations to, who we have scheduled and who we don't have scheduled yet. So part of our goal with this program is actually to present to all 37 cities by the end of June. So in that slide, we've got 10 more to go. So we've we've reached 27 of the 37 to date. And actually, as far as an update on the pledges, Kenmore approved the pledge last night. And we have a couple more scheduled with city councils upcoming in the next few weeks.
Awesome, okay, thank you for for explanation. The 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 second question I have is about the Andy, you mentioned that Bothell has really good recycle rates, but could be better. Can you give us actual numbers?
Yeah, no, of course. And I should caveat this with sort of a health warning, that you probably have a little better data than we do because of the 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 whole contract that you have will report directly to you. But the data estimates that we have for Bothell show that your diversion rate is around 60 to 62%. And that is a really great percentage. As I said, the average for sort of King County is only sort of 53. That being said, there are other cities that have a have a higher percentage. So for example, Bellevue has 66%. Mercer Island has 68%, Renton has 66% too. You also have really high number of subscribers to organic service. So one of the things that we're really pushing for is to increase the number of people who have organic service. Because essentially, you you have to do one of two things, you either have to increase the number of people with service and also or increase the use of the service that people already have. And in Bothell, you have 94% of your single-family home customers who have garbage service also have organics. And the reason why you might have 6% less is that people have home composting, that could be sort of like other reasons. So in a city like yours, we wouldn't necessarily engage with a conversation to say, hey, let's get as many of those 6% to convert. Probably in a city like yours, we would say, hey, the amount of of tons that are coming through on organics, you know, could be higher, you know, you've got around 7,000 tons of organics that come through from around 11,000 customer counts. So there's probably opportunity in your city to increase the number of of the use of the service that you have. And whereas when we compare like to unincorporated King County, for example, we find that on average, only around 50 to 52% of unincorporated King County have the same service. And so one of the things we're trying at the moment is to understand that and and sort of link to that that survey question that we had and got answers for the, you know, King County looking for a consistent approach to collection across the county. And one of the things we're doing at the moment is a survey to find out how people feel about sort of increasing the requirement to have organics collection or, you know, experimenting with things like every other week garbage collection in order to to drive people to recyclables.
That's, so Bothell is split between King County and Snohomish County. And this is only King County, you're just only looking at King County numbers, not the whole city of Bothell.
Yes, and forgive me, I should have made that clarification. And you'll have to invite Snohomish County to come talk to you about the other side.
Well, to clarify, Deputy Mayor, we do send all of our waste to the King County system. Our contract does cover the entire city.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so that is the whole city of Bothell.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
I don't have a question. I just want to say that I really appreciate how this takes some of just the most basic forms of government and uses things that we don't necessarily think of as a climate change initiative to actually meaningfully affect the biggest problems that we face. So just kind of taking what we already do and doing it better and optimizing and being able to help our shared values from there, I really appreciate this effort.
I would echo that. I actually, like, this is sort of like a nerdy hobby of mine to try to reduce waste as much as I can and to study the different ways that industries contribute to greenhouse gases. And it's just something I enjoy looking at. So I would have extended questions and want to have like a very in-depth conversation with you outside of this setting. And the man is like, get me out of here.
I just know how you can be with questions.
I can have questions. And so like where, I will put it this way, if there are, you know, very interested members of the community who would like to know more, where could you send the public to like beyond beyond the beautiful document that is included in our agenda? But how do we how do we help people find ways to be involved and contribute?
Yeah, I think that's that's a great question. And and you can always sort of contact us in Solid Waste Division and nerd out about material management, that's totally fine. So one of the things that we are wanting to do, because we we recognize that none of us have the none of us have the levers of change solely in our control. It has to be a partnership approach. And and one of the things that we will be doing as part of RE Plus is is having more community focused work. So one of the things that that, you know, we've um uh deployed recently is uh circular economy grants. We co-created those grants with communities. And so we invited community to sort of help us design those grants, also designer um our business development accelerator, um which we have gone into partnership with with the state and also city of Seattle called NetCycle. And and so we're trying to be much more focused on bringing community in and partners in to help us define kind of what our actions should be in the first place. And so the net sort of iteration of that is around um our organic work that I mentioned that we're surveying at the moment. We'll be having uh focus groups and also an open house. But your question, I think a broader question, which is how do we kind of collaborate to build the the sort of RE Plus army, I think is an open question. And we would love to hear what you all think is should be part of our solution. What is the thing that we need to offer in order to encourage uh community, community members and CBOs, businesses to engage with us so we can together move to tackle these issues together. And I think that, you know, for us, you know, we might have come at this from, you know, a zero waste perspective, sort of five, ten years ago, but the challenges are so shared around climate and equity and natural um resource use around job development that that we want RE Plus to be a program that combines all of those elements together. And so we definitely want to from uh hear from folk, especially from folk who have been um historically sort of marginalized and hidden from our world. So we definitely want to be intentional to to um find the folk and have them be involved in in our work. So if you've got suggestions on that, then then please do uh let uh either Amy or I know.
Thank you.
Ask as many questions as you want. I feel like you want to be and I go all of your questions.
Um, no, I don't. I don't really think like anything that I might ask would be like germane to this meeting as much as like hearing about, you know, upcoming open houses and that sort of thing. It's like, I just, I hope that you could continue to, you know, communicate those and so that, you know, we can, we as elected officials can be a part of getting that word out. And um I like to offer public engagement opportunities when I send out my newsletter to members of the community. And so if I can get those in there, I would be happy to.
Yeah, no, for sure. Amy, I don't know if there's anything in particular that um you sort of wanted to to highlight around that.
Um, not yet. So one of the things that we are going to be doing is actually creating a quarterly um e- email update to cities on what's going on with the RE Plus program and how we're implementing it, as well as working to spotlight um the great work of the cities and the county and each of those issues. Um and so that will go out to all elected city elected officials within King County. Um and you would be more than welcome to glean uh information from that from your newsletter. Um you can also, I believe, subscribe uh on the website um to information. Um if you uh are not a member of the municipal solid waste management advisory committee, um you can subscribe to those emails and we do monthly updates to that committee on RE Plus as well. Um that's another place to glean information. Um but if there's something specific you want to talk to your constituents about, feel free to reach out. And we'll be happy to help you find that information and and make sure that you can communicate out with your with your residents.
Great, thank you.
You guys, uh, is there any programs around educating the youth? Specifically around youth?
Um, yeah, no, no, great question. So we have to, um, well, I suppose I should clarify, when you say youth, um I'm in Britain, we have a, we that has a very specific meaning. And so hopefully this answers your question. And so we have two programs. We have a green schools program. And and that program is focused on on unsurprisingly, schools. And and it focuses around sort of like infrastructure, setting up clubs and the sort of general and not just around material management, but also about sort of the shift to and uh uh around the sort of green energy. And then we also have a schools education program too, where um the uh we have consultants that go into to to schools in the region to do assemblies and to do curriculum for um kind of younger younger children. So those are the two sort of main programs that 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 we support. What we don't have, and I don't know whether this is what you were getting at, is a program for what in the UK we we would call senior school. And apologies, I can't remember what Americans call sort of school from like fourteen year olds to eighteen year olds. And uh we is that high school?
Yes.
And sorry for for being British uh for a minute. And so um we don't have a program specifically targeted on that age range. However, we are wanting to do more in that in that space with the green schools program at the moment.
Yeah, I was I was asking the question because I just recently went to a presentation on uh youth money management. And 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 the education starts younger now, and and the more we can teach our youth um about this program, um the more we're being proactive, right? It's a little late once people get into their bad habits, right? So um how can we get out in front and create programs in our community for the youth? Educate the youth so they're the future, right? So what more programs we can bring around that might might help us.
And Councilmember, I believe.
And on the city side of things, we do partner pretty closely with Recology to provide presentations on waste in particular. And and then we've been working on sort of an innovative program with students who are just moving into high school um to have them work on actual community problems. Things that they see, and then they can actually have an impact on helping us, so partnering on sustainability issues that we choose.
I was gonna add, Recology is really great with that. So they were at the the Climate Action Day um event that was on the City Hall Plaza, put on by Innovation Lab High School. And so my kid is seven and a half, and they had like the tiny little food things and you sorted them into which bins they go into. And even just that little thing for like a seven year old, like at home now, he's like, this one needs to go in the recycle, guys. Let's remember, you know. So it's it's really great to see them like partnering and showing up at these community events. And if you maybe go to the recology store a lot because your kid's really interested in garbage, um they'll they'll talk and and educate right there too, which is it's just great to have that asset in our community. Yeah.
Councilmembers and our Bothell kids, where did they get it from?
Oh, no.
Um, is there a way that you guys could perhaps partner with school districts? And get school districts themselves on board with RE Plus and start like indoctrinating kids, for lack of a better term, that way?
Yeah, we might not use that term, but um the uh, yeah, yeah, it's a it's a great question. In fact, we're we're having an internal review at the moment on the schools programs because, you know, we do want to make sure that they're uh they're as effective as they can be. And one of the questions we're sort of asking ourselves is can we engage with the districts more and and the, you know, the this the district and this the superintendent? Um because I think there's a there's there's a there's more opportunity to engage there. And and also to engage with uh local parent groups as well, the the, you know, the parent teacher groups. I think there's more opportunity for for us there. And around half of the public schools in King County um work with our green schools program. But there's a lot of schools, and especially in South King County, and and schools that have uh, you know, significant resource pressures and that also find that they have um students from uh marginalized communities that tend at those schools, don't have the resources to participate as easily. And so we're wanting to make sure that we're um uh focused on that as well. Also, um, you know, uh uh again, sort of connected with kind of putting, not just sort of letting uh folk get, not just giving folk information about what does recycling look like, how to do material management, but also thinking about the sort of climate and also the business opportunity around um material management. So one of the things that we co-sponsor is something called PreCycle. And that is sort of like aimed at sort of the next generation of innovators, in particular around university and students that is led by Zero Waste Washington. So a bit of a plug there that like if you do um want to sort of participate in uh in 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 those endeavors, we are sort of engaging and in trying to create the sort of pathway of innovators of the future around material management. And I I think it's absolutely right that we we investigate how um we can start that pathway as early as possible, whether that's through internships or the education, the curriculum, also through grants as well.
Are institutions of higher education invited to sign on to your pledge too?
That is a really great question. I think at the the moment, nearly correct, I'm wrong. We're focused on cities um um right now.
That's correct. We're focused on cities, um particularly because cities have the biggest lift when it comes to um implementing policies that help uh get us towards that seventy percent goal. Um, we are working on um a version for the community. Uh but if there is interest from higher education institutions uh that want to join in with this effort, uh we'd be more than happy to develop one for them as well. Um, you know, I think really the more we can show um support in a formal way, uh the better, the easier it's going to be to get people to come on board and change their habits and really accelerate the process. I don't know how this this fits in, but I did want to, I appreciated um Rami's call out about the two counties. Because, you know, and Bothell's kind of an edge case with that. Uh what is it? Bothell and Auburn, right? But then um the school district, right, you're in Bothell, Woodinville, Kenmore, and a huge chunk of unincorporated Snohomish County. So I guess one one not concern, but thing of note is if the program is available to like part of a school district or part of a city, would it be extended to the whole group? Let's say North Shore signs on, it would go for everybody, right? Even the the people not out outside of King County.
And so specifically on the schools program, um a general sort of rule is that if a if the rate payer funds our system, then they can benefit from our system. So um we do have, um, as you say, sort of edge cases where the the service area is not strictly King County. But so long as the 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 service area is sort of King County service area, then they they would be uh available to join. I do want to take that that question away though, because I would do want to double check with the subject matter experts. Um and i- if you'll permit me, I'll I'll come back to you as soon as possible with an answer on that.
Yeah, absolutely. I I know it's a weird question. We got, we got to get that Bothell flavor in there, right? So totally, totally get it. Thank you. And I, to staff, like, I would like us to to do the pledge. So I I think, I know you want some indication. There's, that's my indication.
Bring him back on the eighteenth.
Yeah.
Is that calendar appropriate?
Yes.
Yes.
You can pull it if you want.
To comment on. Yeah, I guess we do.
I think we're good.
So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna find out though that it's gonna serve our entire community, right? Well, we'll have that answer by the eighteenth, right?
Absolutely.
The RE Plus program will serve the entire Bothell community, um based on our ally with King County. Um for school district, North Shore.
Yeah, that's the Bothell. That's fine. As long as Bothell, yeah.
Is there a comparable program in Snohomish County? I know we're, we have that low and everything, but I'm just curious. This would be a great thing to talk about at SustainMania.
All right, we should let them go.
Yeah.
It's like eight forty at night, and y'all probably want to go not work, if I had to guess. Um, do we have any more questions for them? No? Thank you so much. We really appreciate you. We'll see you again on the eighteenth. Well, we probably won't, but.
I have a question if I can.
We're not doing public comment right now, but thank you.
I understand.
Um, thank you so much.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, council conversations.
Find it in all of my tabs. Okay. Um, so on the the webpage for City of Bothell, um there is a lovely little article that says, City of Bothell uh judged best tasting water in King County. And um I know that my children actually agree with that because these are the kids who um when asked to write a five paragraph essay on their experiences with water, one of their body paragraphs was how good the water tastes in Bothell. And like, I did not know that this was coming. I didn't even know we were like in a competition for it. There is a best tasting water competition and we won it. And so I'm very excited to go home and tell my kids that we won the best tasting water competition. And they'll be like, well, of course we did. I've, we've been all like, everywhere we've been, the water has not been as good.
Alderwood used to win those. And we had Alderwood at my childhood home and at my home now. And my dad would brag about it to like his brothers and family. And I was always like, okay, but I I do appreciate it. So I I don't, we don't have the same water, but I feel you. It's good. And good job to our city utility as well.
Really cool. I don't know, like, how how many people are participating in this thing, this competition? I don't even know, like, how broad.
County competition.
I don't know. I'd have to probably click on the article.
So I can tell you, they they now will go to state because it was the northwest region that they want, so. Okay, so yeah.
It's like kids.
State competition in Kennewick.
Yeah, so so Bothell could keep going.
Yeah, we could, we could take state. And we also won number one and number two in the meter competition, so. Lot of pride in Bothell water right now.
That's exciting.
Not that I'm supposed to wait.
I guess I bring it up just to say that it translates down to some of our youngest community members.
And Erin.
Can I pivot away from water and say, I really appreciate that um we've been able to work in um the the breaking of of fasting during Ramadan into our meeting breaks. I think running for city council, being on city council, there's a lot of things that can make it hard. We all, a lot of us have children, some grown, some not. Um, we have families, we have parents and family members that we're taking care of, and it can be hard to fit your life into this role. And I think I really love seeing how we all can support each other and and pivot as we need to in ways that that functionally make no difference, but mean a lot to us individually. So I really appreciate that environment amongst our group and amongst our staff for making that happen.
Indeed. Thank you so much. And I'm really sick, so either way, I wasn't gonna make it in tonight.
Hope you feel better soon, Robbie.
Thank you.
Thanks for not sharing.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for staying home.
Not sharing is caring too.
I'm gonna steal that.
Not sharing is caring. We always say that sharing is caring. Um, I was able to attend the first North Shore Youth Center board meeting as a guest speaker. So I was able to kind of tell a little history of where and divisions come from. Um, I think they're up to like fourteen board members now. They met at the senior center this last week. Um, uh, one of the newest board members is the dean of students for the University of Washington. And they're having conversations right now on tutoring programs with the University of Washington to help the students of the North Shore School District be able to get tutoring from the older students. Um, and then they also met this last week with a gentleman, and I'm gonna torture his name, but it's Clinton or Clifton uh from down south who runs a program that I spoke about a little earlier called uh Money Matters. And what they do is they teach youth, they have this program, teach youth about money and how to invest money and what it means to have a budget, a household budget, how to, you know, teach you financing type stuff. And so um out of that meeting came a partnership, they're gonna partner with one of their first pilot programs um to educate kids in the North Shore area about money. So um even though they don't have a facility yet, there there's a full steam ahead on different programs and stuff. And so I think the, they wanted to come and give uh, they wanted to give Bothell, Kenmore and Woodinville a presentation soon. So hopefully we can set something up to have them come in and give us a presentation on where they are and things that they're doing. So I might bring that back to the council on maybe the next meeting or something to see if we can set something up for them. But I I'm super um excited about what they're doing and and the people that they're bringing on to the board. So hopefully we can get things moving soon.
He's not here, but I bet Councilmember Manki will be all over that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure he is.
And super important too. Um, because the education you get at home, right, it kind of, you learn from your parents, you learn from their parents, you learn from their parents. So you can have sort of a cycle of of decisions that maybe aren't ideal.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was powerful. They have a video up. Um, it's already an operating program down in the South End. Um, and the thing that that I've learned is that, you know, we we have our day to day lives and we're going so fast, but our school district's not teaching our kids about money. but our school district's not teaching our kids about money, how to do their finances. So we as parents are there watching, absorbing what we're doing. So if we can get them into programs that'll help them understand, it might give them a little bit better opportunity. And we don't all live in the same economic status, right? So some of the kids that are in our area need a little bit more help than other kids. So the program is free to kids. They don't charge for the program. They operate on grants. So I'm super excited that that's one of their first pilot programs. And then hearing from REPLUS tonight, that's education as well, right? So anything that we can do to help start helping our youth and educate them, hopefully will be a proactive approach to the future, so. Excited.
I'll do it.
Can you, is there, can you let us know the best way to follow the work of that board? Like, if there's emails or, I would love to watch some of the meetings. Some organizations don't quite have their web presence up to say when the meetings are.
No, I think what I'll do is, maybe what I should do is just email Bora or something, contact information, and then she can distribute it to council or something. Or I can have the president of the board email you, and then you can distribute the information on how to connect.
I think that'd be great.
In advance. Thank you. I missed this earlier when it came to committee reports. A couple weeks ago, on the 22nd, Councilmember Minkie asked me to attend Snohomish County tomorrow for him. And they did, it was a presentation from the Department of Commerce on housing targets. And it was really interesting, and I took way more notes than I expected I was going to. But I think some of the take homes was that the Washington State acknowledges that the undersupply of housing is what's driving housing costs up. And as, and so this is a quote, "As cities allow more housing to be built and allow more housing types to be built, we'll be able to address the undersupply." There's a great three-page summary that is available on the Commerce website. And it was really interesting information that they were putting out there. So that is something totally worth checking out if you have some time, and I can send the notes on too.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Everybody's looking, they don't have anything else left to say. All right.
No gap.
Word adjourned.
Everybody have a good spring break.
Yes.
Enjoy.